Select Board, Town Office, regular meeting Thursday, December 14th, 2017 at 7:00 PM. The agenda approval. Approval of the minutes of 11:16-17. Bravo 7-17, special meeting. Warrants, mail, administrative assistance report, transfer station supervisors' operation report, preliminary fiscal year 19 budget figures for the transfer station, old business, copy of quotes, large gathering ordinance, this is the final read and adoption, town office mold assessment, new business to do with the census participation, and we're gonna go into executive session for personnel at the end. Anything else?
Yeah, we want to put in there legal at the end.
Legal be one of them?
Yep, and the web notification, and Christmas gift cards also.
Okay, okay, the personnel.
Yep.
Under there, okay. Actually, I think the web notification probably can go up under old business D. You just, that would want to say something about notification for the web, because that's not really an executive session. Okay, the other is personnel, which you talked about, I assume, you talked about that. Okay, with that, those changes, I'll get a motion to approve.
I'd like to have that see on old business, town office mold assessment. Could you move that up either right after Tom, so we could talk on that?
Okay, sounds like a plan to me.
Rather than go back and forth.
Make it the first thing in old business? Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. And with those changes, I'll take a motion to approve?
So moved.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, approval of the minutes of 11:16-17?
So moved.
Get a second.
Second.
Any discussion on them? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Abstentions or nays? Approvals of 12:07-17, special meeting?
So moved.
Get a second.
Second.
Any changes in discussion on it? None? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any abstentions or nays? All those in favor said aye, okay, warrants, gonna be a few here, guys, so. Payroll, ending 11:22-17, $6,835.35. Payroll report ending 12:01-17, in the amount of $6,860.7. Number three, payroll report, ending 12:08-2017, in the amount of $7,471.59. Number four, payroll, ending 12:15-2017, in the amount of $9,114.45. Number five, accounts payable, ending 11:22-17, in the amount of $31,271.36. Number six, accounts payable, ending 11:24-17, in the amount of $20,815. Number seven, accounts payable, ending 12:01-17, in the amount of $13,635.88. Accounts payable, ending 12:08-17, in the amount of $17,273.62. Accounts payable, ending on 12:15-17, in $21,136.14. Accounts payable, 12:16-17, in the amount of $231,640, and this was for the ballot articles. That's what that was for. Okay, with that, Brad, I'll take a motion to approve?
So moved.
Get a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions?
Number seven, I abstain.
Number seven, I'm a no vote.
Okay, so, so we have two, one no and one abstention for number seven. All the rest are aye? Okay, just so I know how we record.
There's a couple I haven't signed yet, but I need to look at them.
We have a request for reimbursement for the Vermont Agency of Transportation. This was to do with a structural guarantee, and the amounts of water was $94,500. What's, what's your wish? Do you wish we sign this, guys?
Yes.
Do you move?
Moved to sign it.
Get a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
And y'all have to sign this. While you're doing that, I'll talk about the transfer station, and I might have you join in, let me on this one here. And this is to do with the water quality tests and the sampling that we do over there. And basically, from what I can see from this, it looks like the quality test has come back okay, there's been no major sighting of anything. Do you have any specific you wish to add to that?
Uh, no, really. I get to see Oscar often when he comes, well, when he comes in, he usually gives me a call. He's there very early in the morning normally. What it basically comes down to is, the recommendations are the same. We continue just to, the routine mowing of the two closed landfills, we have to do that, and we're fortunate enough that we have a, a local farmer in the town that does it and makes hay with it, so. It doesn't really cost us much, and we have to trim up with our mower, and so, we use it, but, and then the, the current water quality monitoring program. Oscar talked to Bud Swallow, last year actually, about trying to get some of these things reduced, and Bud says, we have, we have places that you can actually drink the water like nothing, and we won't let them do it either, so. So basically, we're gonna be with this, I'll infant him, you know, as far, as far as I know. The things, the water, the water qualities are good, you know, we're happy, you know, with what we have, but, you know, this is one of the things we're, we're really kind of stuck with, and we're not gonna be able to get out of at all, no matter when, so. It's a...
That's part of owning a...
That's part of owning two closed landfills, you know, you got it.
From reading this, I didn't see anything, but nobody's come to you and said anything specifically wrong over there either, everything's...
Oh, no, 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 every, no, we, well, he, he and I, we call and stuff, talk and stuff too. Oscar's a very professional advisor.
Well, I know that you bump into them, I just wanted to know if they were bringing up any red flags, because they weren't showing nothing here.
No, nothing at all.
Super, thanks.
Nothing at all, so, everything, everything's fine with that.
Okay, we'll get back to you in just a second. And then we have attached a compliance filing for the panel tenure, hydroelectric project on the Hooxick River, for FERC, which has been done. And now, we thank Bill Scully for doing this, and we'll see what happens. Now that we have a memo from Jim Sullivan to do with the Vermont Housing Conservation Board funds, the BRCRC is using for planning and engineering services necessary for the completion of the recreational trails program application, $5,000. They want to let us know if they're working on that, it's moving forward, funds are there. They come for that. And then we have a newsletter from the Bennington County Solid Waste Alliance, to show, I assume you'll be talking about some of this, Tom, so, I won't read this thing verbatim, but it looks like the events went well, and they're talking a little bit about the food waste thing, I don't know if we're there yet, but you can tell us that when we get there. One of our planning board members basically has sent to us the Newton's Code of Conduct for the boards and commissions for our review, so if you can see what the City of Newton, Massachusetts, does for code of conduct policy for the board, commissions, and committee members in the town of Newton. If people get a chance, they can look at that and see what is done in other towns. We have a letter from Ray Bolton, our attorney, attorney at law, that works here with getting records from the clerk, and I will, I'll read this, because it's short and it's direct to us, it's a recommendation from the assistant town clerk we have. "It is with pleasure that I am writing you regarding my experience with Julie Weber, Assistant Town Clerk. Julie is doing an excellent job of organizing the land records, providing information to attorneys, recording documents, and promptly returning them to the provider. When I have been at the town clerk's office, she has efficiently and courteously addressed concerns of panel residents who enter the office. I believe the vault space, although crowded, is now better arranged than previously. Julie has worked in a very professional manner, and I look forward to continuing my office association with her." I'm very glad to get this. We get very few things on how our employees do, it was very nice, and I thank the board, we all thank Ray for keeping us informed of what's happening. Very nice. On the other side of the scale, our lister has, one of them has resigned, Laura Dickinson, and she basically, in order to proceed into retirement, pursuing activities. Now there is two vacancies on the board of listers, so if somebody is interested in serving on that, please let us know, put a letter of interest into the panel select board, stop by and see Linda and leave it, or talk to, so she can do that, and when the list serves, she can explain a little bit what the job entails, our flesher can, but we're in need of two listers, and we're, I take a motion...
Nelson, they could probably also email Linda, couldn't they, if they don't have time to stop in?
It's okay with me, you know.
Is that okay with you, Linda?
And it's on the webpage.
Want to give her her email address?
Well, they can go to the...
Web page and get it?
Panel webpage and get it, okay. I take a motion from the board to accept the resignation with regret.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Would you send her a quick, quickie note that basically thanks her for her service, Linda?
Yes.
The zoning administrative monthly log, there was 12 permits that came in by verification, and six permits that were done in one subdivision, for what was done out there. Mostly been garages and camps and storage, that stuff is what's going on, and things should slow, slow down, and I should make people aware of the 12, that was for three months, things have slowed down. It wasn't one month's worth, that was three months. Okay, administrative assistant report.
Catamount Environmental tested the buildings slated for demolition and the ceiling and the second vault. I spoke with them today, we can expect the lab results and the report next week. The reimbursement documentation for Mount Anthony Culvert Project is complete and ready to submit to District One, it'll go out tomorrow. Representative from VLCT Worker Comp Division visited the Southern Lake towns to distribute information and discuss procedure. I have forwarded info along to the fire departments and rescue squad, and that's what you have for a couple envelopes there. Budget requests for nonprofits and departments were issued at Thanksgiving, all budget requests should be back in my office by December 22nd. Chuck Watson has completed the server installation and the workstation computers, he's currently working on the telephone upgrade. The additional phone line's been installed, but it's inactive at this time. The alarm company was here this afternoon to survey the town office and did the highway department. The draft hearing minutes were submitted to the attorney for his review, I requested the attorney to draft the decision notice for the road discontinuance.
Good.
And that's it for me.
I have a question, um, last month we talked about carpet quotes.
Carpet quotes, we're gonna talk about, this is, we'll talk about all this in the discussion.
Maybe we ought to wait till, about the mold.
Okay.
But we, we do have the quotes from previous, so we have a dollar amount, we'll talk about it in depth.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Can I...
Go ahead.
Can I ask where we are on budget? Do we have to get anything done for budget for next week, or anything ahead of time? Are we doing, we're dealing with all our budgets next week, right?
We're dealing with them, each week we're gonna be dealing with them. One question that Ellen and I have, have for the board is, each year when we do budget, we work with different board members who have a different way of approaching the budget, and we would like to know if you would like us to enter all the budget figures that we're aware of and present it to you, and then you can work your way through, and I mean, right off the bat, you'll know, put in everybody's requests, and you'll have a bottom line, and take it from there, or do you want to do it some other way?
I think that's how we did it last year, right?
No.
No.
No? Okay.
No, I, I think that is a better way, because it gives us a bottom line to work from, and if we go back...
I think it's less time-consuming. I mean, Ellen and I, we pretty much can put the budget, when we have all the figures, we can put the budget together in like a couple days.
Yeah, why don't you, I just see that, because then we'll work, what, I'll call it in reverse, but we'll work backwards to see what we think should be changed to reduce the budget if it's necessary, versus us giving you something, you give it to us, then we turn around and give it to you again, and before we're done, it's three times at the same thing. Yeah, I agree with you, I think that's a good idea.
Okay. So, my, my plan is, we're gonna start with the transfer station this evening, Tom is gonna present his preliminary figures, and you can take it home with you, and, you know, we did, discuss it and whatever. I have Joel scheduled for next week, we can start working on the road budget, he'll come in and present to you what he wants to do for projects, and, and talk about it, and he has budget figures. If we have them ahead of time, we'll be able to get them into the computer.
Good.
The road is probably the most lengthy, and then after that, we'll proceed into the rest of the general fund.
And, and our deadline to get this done is the end of January?
The, each, each one of you in your purple folders has a timeline, it's the pink paper, and it'll give you a drop date, when you, when you must be complete.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? None, then we'll move on.
Okay. All right, uh, we have a couple things we're, we're working on. If you look at my reports, first thing we'll see the e-cycles, we had a, was surprised by it from Karen from the Department of Conservation, and she wanted to check out the e-cycles, and, to be quite honest with you, the day before, I actually cleaned everything up, swept it up and everything, it was perfect timing, but, it was, I mean, everything was right dead on, you know, so she was, she was very nice, and we had, we had quite a good conversation there, very, very enlightening. Our last shipment, I just got the, the things here last week, that we were beginning $345.76 for our last shipment of covered electronics. They take, we usually have one Gaylord of electronics that are not covered, they take those free, so, which is fine, so we don't, you know, if they're, they're not charging, we're not gonna charge for them, but at some point, if they decide they have to charge for the non-covered, which are stereos and things like that, and BCRs and so forth, then perhaps we'll have to, to do something, we'll have to see what happens, but as far, as long as we, I've been doing it here, they've never charged for them, they're taking them free. I know some places charge, but, but we haven't, you know, we're not paying anything, so why should, why should our taxpayers? She's also in charge of the fluorescent recycling in the state, and I was showing her that little storage unit we have there at the end of the swap shop, where we have our little stuff stored in there, and she said that would be an absolutely perfect thing to do, and they'll send me boxes, shipping labels, basically what we're doing with the household batteries. I mean, that's more of a national thing, but it's affiliated with the state also, it's called, the, called recycle for the batteries, you know, when people bring in like the ones off their drills, or AA batteries, hearing aid batteries, whatever, you know, we ship them out, and it doesn't, doesn't cost us anything, we get shipping labels and the boxes, and this is the same type of thing, and this is a, this has been a source box for a lot of people, trying to get rid of fluorescent tubes and so forth, for a long time, so, if this, this works, I'd really like to do this, I think, I think the people in the town would really appreciate it.
I'm okay with it, as long as it's in a controlled environment, so kids can't get in and break all the bulbs and...
That's exactly it, that's, that's exactly, that, that is a locked area, you know, I mean, it's locked and so forth, and, and she approved it, I mean, she, I showed her, would this work, and she said, oh yeah, this would be perfect. I said, well, I'm gonna, I'll close this off up between where the books are and so forth, there's a small area where somebody could, could possibly get in, but she said, no, it'll be, it'll be fine. So, that's something, that's something I like to do, and I'd like to have that ready to go July 1st, so, just start with the, with our first school year with everything else, that'd be something nice, I think, people would do this. The Hiddamasker Road Cleanup, they, they said that in the paper, they had 45 tires, we got 83.
That's good.
You know, I, I don't think, I think Megan was, was...
Maybe 45 came from one place.
Oh, I don't know, I mean, they, they were coming in, they were coming in, they were coming in, they were all from it, I, because I only had like seven tires, I ended up with 90, I said, okay, I said, I can do the math.
Yeah, it's good though.
Now, we have the, the old, that old salt shed, I guess it was originally, where we put the tires and stuff in, it's leaning down, all I have to do is pull the batteries out of there, and that thing's ready to go. Then, what I'd like to do is get the new, the one-trip shipping containers, these come out of Rhode Island, they're, they're basically brand new, and I was looking at the used ones, and they have, one of their websites and a couple of places do, they're rusty, and they just painted right over the rust and so forth, and I think that if we're gonna spend them, we may as well spend another, you know, $2,000 apiece, rather than get a used one that's all, all beat up, and get a, get a new one. You know, get two new ones, and what I'd like to do is...
So, so if I understand you correctly, if we buy two new ones, we're talking basically about $4,000 more than what we would if we paid for the used ones?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, and they're, they're painted, and they're nice.
Can I get this question? Did you have any chance to get a price up here in Vermont? They have the mortgage.
I looked, I, I tried to find some people up there, and I tried to get quotes from some, and I couldn't get anybody to do it.
I'll see if I can get you one, because I bought one a lot cheaper than that, just two years ago.
Well, are they, as long as they're...
They're one trip.
For one trip?
That's all. No, I don't buy them other ones, one trip, so...
If you, if you can do that, that'd be fine.
I'll see if I can get a price, I should have my checkbook.
I mean, I, you know, we're not set in with these, and then see what, you know, basically what the shipping would be, just give me, just give me their, their numbers and stuff, and I'll talk to them, if you have it, you know, just make sure you get it to me over the transfer station, which will be fine. And what I'd basically like to do is put like one here, one here, and then just build a shed roof, and then we can pull the backhoe in underneath there, I want to run power over to them, they're gonna be up there basically where they are now, but I'd like to run power over to them, that way we can keep the backhoe in there, have it plugged in for nights like this, of course, and then the other thing is, I'd like to put lights in with the oil, I don't care about the tires, but where we do the oil and the batteries, and then the other thing is, we were thinking about, I've been looking for a composting toilet, we could put a, we could build a little, almost like a little bathroom in there for us, but, you know, in the cold, we could put a little heater and stuff in there.
Oh, you're saying that that bathroom's a little cold, okay.
Not only is it a little cold, it also gets a little hot, too, it depends, what time of year it is.
Case in the season, right?
Yeah, and it's, it's, it's nasty, but I mean, that, we'd have, we'd have enough room to do that, and it would take, yeah...
Well, let's get the quotes on the things, then we can decide what to do.
Yeah, well, I just want to give them to you, we have other stuff to do.
Okay, yep.
All right, the backhoe, Joel was looking, he found a couple of different things, and we talked about some other options for the back bucket on the backhoe to help compact. The one we have is too narrow, and it's got the, it doesn't have the teeth on it, has the studs where you attach your teeth to them, and they catch stuff, and it's, you know, it doesn't do as good a job as if we'd had like a flat bucket, like a grating bucket or something going there, it'd be fine. All right, we're talking about the scheduling next year, when we're gonna be on and off, and it's talking about scheduling, I'll make a point right now, we're gonna be closed this Saturday before Christmas, the 23rd, we're closed all day, and the following Saturday, I think it's the 30th, we will be closed at noon. Okay? And, which is good, I'm glad I did that, because Penn State plays at noon that day. Playing the Fiesta Bowl, I can't, I can't, well, no, I didn't know that, I mean, we made this up last year at this time, so, you know, I was hoping, I was hoping for New Year Day Bowl, but we didn't quite make it, but, you know, my knits, that's the way we go. The Household Hazard Waste Spence are in that letter that was alluded to earlier, May 12th in Bennington, and September 15th in Dorset. They were, they were well taken care of the second time, the, the first one was a disaster in Bennington, I think that Stu Hurd is taking care of that, we, we've talked about it, we discussed it in our meetings, you know, since then, we had another meeting just on that, with Casella's people and Michael Bachar and myself. So, I think that next year, it's gonna be a lot better, a lot faster for people, the way that they're gonna do it, and I'm certainly hoping it is, you know. So, that's basically what I have on that, I don't know if you want to go to the mold stuff before we do the budget, or you want to do that last?
Probably want to do the mold stuff first.
Would you, I'm sorry, Linda?
Probably want to do the mold first, before we get into the budget.
All right, what did, what did you, you, I mean...
All right, what I had is, we thought we had a little mold problem down my house, so I had a guy come down, and while I was there, I asked him if he'd come up in the town office and check it out, and he did, for free. The type of machine he had, when you get a reading, the mold, mold spores and dust mites should be at 25, and the chemicals, ragweed and pollen should be at 5. So, went to each workstation, Julie's was 146 for the mold, and 36 for the chemicals. The restroom was 260, and the chemicals and ragweed were 12. Linda's station was 186 for the mold, and 6. Barb's was 181, and 17. Ellen's was 190, and 18. And what this is, is a machine he puts in to electric right in their workstation, it comes out. It's not the same thing that Rich did. The cellar was 13,005.20 for the chemicals and ragweed and pollen. So, I didn't really know what to do, so I took it on myself to call Rich, and I read this material that he sent out, and he thinks it's very important for him to come down and check this again. It's up to you what you want to do, he said, I wouldn't, I wouldn't take the rugs out or anything till he come down and checked it, because he's got a more sophisticated, you know, machine than what we did, but...
I say do it, let's do it.
Okay.
It's the board's an agreement.
So I just...
Yeah, yeah.
Because I know what you've done.
Who's Rich?
Rich, Rich is the, is the guy that put this whole program out, Francis is Rich. It was done in 2015.
Right.
Yeah, same guy.
Okay.
And who was this guy?
This was this guy from Pittsfield, is more like a friend than, he came in and did this for nothing. There's no sense in him coming down and doing it again, like, you know.
There's different machines you can...
Yeah, this is a quick and easy one that he did, but...
So let's, let's, I'm in agreement, as long as the rest of the board's in agreement, let's just have them do it again.
Right.
Then, when was that one done?
2015.
Yeah, this time.
Well, when I, when I closed up the stuff downstairs, I took and I sprayed, you know, this wall, that wall, and this, this back wall underneath, up in with the Joyce and everything were, so, and I literally had it drenched, with a mildew and mold spray on it, it was just straight, and wasn't diluted or anything, we're down there and sprayed this thing, and, you know, it's, it's dried out there. I mean, it's dry, but the thing of it is, you've got a wooden foundation, and the boards, you know, if you're gonna replace it, you're gonna have to replace it with a, with a masonry foundation, pour a floor over, over the, over, you know, over the dirt with a, with a vapor barrier that's down there, would certainly be adequate, but, you know, it's just a fact that now you've got it infiltrated into everything else, you know, I'm not sure...
It's so strong down there, you can't breathe when you open that door, because your dehumidifier is unplugged for the winter, so it won't breathe.
Yeah, yeah, well, it's been frozen today, for sure. Yeah, no, that's, but, but the fan's still on, the fan's on humidistat, and I even turned it down, so it's, you know, it's like, I think it's 40%, but it didn't mean it's dry, but, yeah, I, see, I didn't know, I didn't, I didn't notice any smell and stuff when I went down there, and that was five weeks ago?
That was just...
About, yeah, about five weeks ago is when I did that, I don't know, can't remember exactly. I don't know, I can't remember exactly. But, uh, but I know it was, really was dry in there. But you can still, I mean, you've got.
Right now, you can see all the moisture underneath the plastic.
Oh yeah, you can see, oh, yeah, you can see that. That's why we use that, uh, the ten mil reinforced plastic people walk on.
Well, we can talk about this forever. I think the thing to do is let's get it tested again.
Okay.
And we can move on because.
I'll just have Linda contact because she contacted.
I just wanna stress that every one of us are symptomatic. And the quotes for the, the quotes that Tom got in two thousand sixteen for the carpets and to do the flooring. You were talking six to eight grand at that point. We need to look a little further before we decide what, what to do about the floor. So there's been no putting anything out to bid.
Yep, I agree. Let's find out, I, I think the first test is this.
Okay.
Let's find out, cause it sounds like we're getting worse, not better.
Yeah.
So let's, let's find that out first.
And we've done everything that was, uh, pretty much required. I mean, we can't take the outside boards off. Well, we could, we did the, the column.
I mean, the only thing left was the floor.
It was, that's why I, we keep talking about the same thing, but we need to test it. We'll see where we're at. Because we did do a lot of things and if it didn't no good.
Well, some people are foaming the floor underneath, but I don't know if that works or not.
Uh, let's find out what, how bad it is.
You're better off to go to this guy. He knows a lot more about it than we do.
Yeah, I think he's got more sophisticated equipment and so forth.
Yeah, and we do it down at work. They do it all the time, but they close the building down when they do it and then let people back. Okay, so that's where we're at. We're gonna find out. What's the next thing you got?
Well, I think now we're gonna go into the, uh, the preliminary budget here. Uh, what I have, uh, done here, just opened this up. It's not easier for me to put the items on the, uh, on the spreadsheet rather than going through the other stuff. So I just made that up last night. And I just thought, well, I just, rather than going back and forth and changing.
Just show us what it was last year and what it is this year, which we need.
Exactly.
Okay, where's the highlights here?
Well, the highlights, well, we have a couple of things here. Uh, one thing is on the building and grounds. Of course, some of that's been some of these sheds and stuff I put on, uh, last year. But then we still have, we still have some more stuff to do with some of these sheds and things. The storage containers and everything, that's gonna, that's gonna come out of the, the reserve fund I have from what I, what we talked about last year.
The buildings fund.
The building fund. Now, if we, we're gonna take the, uh, I mean, everything else is pretty much the same. You know, going down through stuff and I was looking at things and where we are and what we're going. You know, I, I think we're gonna be, you know, just about the same on everything. Except for this building and grounds. And one of the reasons that it, it went up so high this year is we went from sixty-five hundred to almost ten thousand dollars for this, this testing. And because I think the, the state made them test more things and, and different things and so forth. And that's what it, in fact, I know that's what it is. They, they're mandating, okay, now you've gotta test for this and this and this, you know, in addition. I think what happened with this PFOA thing is that now they're thinking of anything. Okay, now everything's gotta get tested. So they're, they're throwing that out. And that's one of the, that's probably one of the big things there. Uh, the rest of the stuff, I think, is pretty much the same. Uh, the SWIP went down for this year.
Yeah, I saw that.
All right, uh, but now, right now, that is, what we have built out so far this year, what we've been built is only fifty-eight percent of what the quarter should have been. So we're, you know, we're now, I, you know, Michael's on a wonderful job with this. Michael Bacher's on a wonderful job. And, you know, if we can, if we can keep this and we save forty percent on that figure, that's a wonderful thing, you know? But, but, I mean, that's, that's because he's getting all these grants and so forth. If they dry up, then we're back up to that figure. You know, he's, he's been able to, uh, to get us a lot of money, uh, you know, to offset some of our costs and so forth.
Okay, I wanna go back to the one you were talking about initially. Which line item was that to do with the testing?
Oh, that's, uh, twenty. That's the, the building and grounds.
A transfer station building and ground?
Yeah, you see, uh, there's an asterisk behind it.
Yep.
Sorry.
Uh, yeah, I see that. So that's, so that's not to do with any buildings or any.
No, 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 that's, that's basically.
Testing?
Yeah, well, and then what I've done, actually, I put some of the, you know, the materials and stuff for these sheds that we built. And we got one more to finish and then, you know, move some things around before we start the other stuff.
So there's two things that I see in it. And there's the testing that's being done of all the wells and stuff.
Right.
But at the same time as any construction we're doing?
There is, there is some, yeah, we built the, uh, organic shed and some other stuff. And we still have to finish some things and I wanna do, uh, some other, some other stuff, so.
I thought at one point we had those things were separate lines. So we knew what we were paying these god darn engineers that come and do our testing.
Well, that's what, that's, that's where they say they put it. I don't know, I mean, I've never seen.
We had to consolidate lines.
They, they consolidate, okay, that's why. It'd be nice if we, if I had that, but.
Well, I'm just trying to think that, you know, from our, from my point of view as managing the town money. I like to know what we're spending on testing, which is mandatory.
Right.
And then I wanna know what isn't mandatory that we're spending on buildings and repair and the rest. But when I separate those.
I would like that also.
Those, separating those two things, let me manage something. And I think that's, personally, I think that's the way it is. I don't know about the rest of the board and I don't know how hard it is to do that. But I think we oughta have budget lines that show it that way, not combining them as one.
Yeah, I, I agree. I agree, but this is what, this is the accounting structure I'm dealt with, so.
Yeah, well, I know, but I'm just, I'm, we might change it and that's what we might have to do.
Well, that'd be, actually, I would like that. That would, I, I think that would, that would give me a better idea.
See what we can do about that.
Yeah, I just, you know, if testing has gone up and it's by ten thousand.
Well, no, it hasn't gone up that much, but it, uh, you know, this is, this is a lot of building material and so forth.
Yeah, I was gonna say it's up there, right?
Yeah.
So let's, let's, but I think we need to know that sort of things. Because it's one thing to point at what the state's making us do. And it's another thing of what we have to do because we wanna provide the service, so.
Yeah, uh.
So, but that's the only thing I, uh.
Yeah.
Actually, that's the consultant cost, right? There are consultants.
Yeah.
Right. And then one of the other things here, if we do happen to get this, uh, this composting toilet and so forth put in there, we, we can all, we can always drop twelve hundred a year on the, on the utilities and stuff. But, till we get that in, I.
Yeah, I think.
I think we need to leave that in. But that, the purchase of that would go in coming up, uh, reserve fund out of the building fund.
And I, again, I don't have, I don't mind things being combined. It's fine with me. What I'm more worried about is things that we don't have control on, what we have control on.
I understand. I, I, I agree with you a hundred percent.
Okay.
Hey, that's.
So, very good.
Moving on.
Okay, moving on, then we get down there, uh, with the fees. I just, you know, we're, we're running about, it looks like it's gonna be like fifty-two, fifty-three, going back. And I had it sixty. I, I think that fifty-five is probably more of a, as a, uh, an accurate figure for revenues.
What have you been getting?
Well, that's what I'm saying. It's, you know, I'm trying to extrapolate what we, what we've had so forth. Uh.
We have something that.
I don't have that. Now, you know what? I don't have that with me. I don't have that with me. I, I, I do have it, but I don't, what was it? It was like fifty.
Fifty thousand eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars, it says.
Yep, something like that, yeah.
Okay.
But I think, I think we're gonna do a little bit more because of things, so, yeah, it was in there.
I don't have any trouble with being fifty-five.
And then the stickers, the stickers, I said sixteen-five. I think sixteen hundred's more of a realistic figure. Uh, yeah, the batteries we're getting more for right now. The electronics, uh, I'd say fifteen hundred, same. And the hauler permits, there's actually only two haulers, so that's fifty dollars apiece, that's a hundred. I thought I could find two more, but I couldn't. So, so really, we, we got Casal, we got Casellas and, uh, Tam. So, I mean, that's, that's a fifty dollar. Those are our, our revenue sources there. So this is, uh.
This your preliminary and?
This, this is my preliminary, you know, take a look at it. We'll work on, uh, whatever, whatever you think. And I also, uh, which one? The hazardous disposal, I del, I deleted that because that's one hundred five, fifty-four, thirty, eighty-four point four oh. Uh, there's one we can get rid of because the, our household hazardous stuff is, is based on our SWIP. All right, that's included in the SWIP.
Okay, so that's part of that cost now?
That's part of that cost. So we don't, we don't have, uh, we don't get to build that. We don't get to build that separate line. That, that's, that's included in it. So we really don't, we really don't need that one.
Sounds good.
Yeah. Uh.
I'd like to see.
Everything else, propane tank removal, we can, we can get rid of that one also. Because we're, we're taking care of the, any propane tanks we get in. We're, you know, we're just, we're, uh, we're taking care of them.
You got both of those that he talked about, Linda, to remove?
Yeah, the ones is seventy-five point three oh and then the other one is the eighty-four point four oh. Those, those are, those two that are irrelevant right now, so.
I think for the first year or so, it'll only be inactivated.
Right.
Yeah. Well, I mean, it's, yeah, yeah. But, uh, that's, that's, that's where we are. Any, uh, any questions?
No, good.
Looks like the propane one is already like in a deactivated mode.
Yeah, I thought we'd done that before, but still, we're still showing up, so.
As long as it's showing up zeros.
Good.
Okay.
Okay.
I think I worked vapor clip there.
Anything else for transfer station guys? Any concerns?
So we're gonna, when we have the, uh, quotes for the containers, I think.
Well, he, he, Bruce gives me.
I'll try to get them tomorrow or next day.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think it's a good idea. I'd like to see the.
Yeah.
See if we can do better, but I think it's a good, something look.
Yeah, two twenty footers. Yeah, I'm gonna put them in there and we're gonna pour concrete over. There's, there's asphalt there now, but it's pretty, right, I think we'd like to pour concrete pad. And then I can actually, uh.
Square them up.
Yeah, I get the stuff squared up and then I can build, I can just take and, and put the posts off of those and tie them with these. So the whole thing's tied together for the shed roof, for the, for the hoe. And, you know, I think that would make, make a lot of, it'd be nice. It'd be a lot nicer for us.
Okay, I'm gonna move on. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Everybody, if I don't see you all, have a nice holidays now.
Yep, you too.
Thank you.
A copier quotes, guys. Here we have.
There's really one for a comfortable chair.
Is this a copier to be used by all the staff, Linda? Is that what?
This copier primarily is used in the town clerk's office.
But is it?
Can be used by all the staff.
Will it be or will it not be? Are you talking about maybe a different one?
Um, my primary use of, of the printer is the one located right there. This is the one that we just repurchased, they refurbished.
I thought we were talking about copiers.
Copiers.
Yes, well, the printer and the copier. There was question as to why we were, in one of your emails, why we were getting this in the copier. And it's because I use this for processing the checks. And I can't do, I can't send it from my computer out to the other one.
You gotta be where it is.
I gotta be where it is.
Which is understandable.
But yes, primarily the copier is for everybody in the office to use. It mostly will be used by the town clerk and the attorneys. They are priority.
Which is.
Can it be, it can be used by everybody, right?
Mm-hmm.
Um, but it's not just a copier, right? Isn't this quote for a copier, printer, fax, all in one or no?
I'm not really sure. I thought you were just asking for a copier.
Oh, I thought we were asking for the whole thing. One of, I know Kiocera has the big printer that's a copier, printer, fax, all in one scanner.
I have, I do have something from Simquest. You probably, since you use one at your office, you could probably tell us.
Well, Simquest is what we got here.
I don't think Simquest is carrying Kiocera's anymore. They just, somebody just bought them out.
Well, it's, yeah, they, uh.
This guy left off this information for us.
And these.
And I really think that Chuck was probably more leaning towards him.
Is there, is it lease with purchase or just lease for these period of times?
Lease.
Okay. What type of meet, this program comes with them?
Oh, Chuck didn't say this. He put this together really quickly cause he knew you wanted it.
Yeah, it says fax, printer, scan and color scanning. If this is the one that we're talking. Twenty-five pages per minute, automatic reserve.
Talking about a model C three oh eight. And all the one that you're looking at.
That's a two-five oh four.
MPC two-five oh four is the other ones.
Uh, well, this one's the MPC two-five oh four, which is the colored digital system.
That's a recall.
With a lease, which has twenty-five pages per minute, automatic reserve document feeder, hundred sheet capacity. Four five hundred and fifty sheet paper doors, which is the three doors. A bypass, a book finisher, a stapler, a fax machine, a printer, a scan, email, scanned folder and color scanner. And it's an all in one.
It's an all in one.
Okay, and if, if I'm correct with this, the per page charge is point oh oh seven for the black and white prints and point oh five for the color prints? On that one? I assume the twenty-five hundred and two fifty, what do they, that stand for? Number of pages you're allowed or before the quote changes or what?
I don't, I don't really know. Um.
It sounds like to me.
Actually, if you, I would like, if you, if you want, we could ask Chuck to come in next week.
I think we're better off than just talking about this with the, I don't know.
He'd probably like to tell you a little bit about the phones too.
Yeah, so let's, let's do that and put this away because if we don't have answers, there's no sense discussing. Next week.
I didn't realize that when you, when you sent this to everybody that it was separated.
Okay, moving on.
Give that back to you so it doesn't get lost.
Large gathering ordinance, guys? Large gathering ordinance, guys. Final reading, final you have in front of you. People got a chance to look through this. I didn't, but I helped write it the first time, so I read the second. This is the one that you pieced the two together, Linda?
No, that's the final one that you worked on.
Okay, sounds fine with me that I haven't read it. I haven't read it since then, so I'm okay. Let's do it. What do we need to do here on this?
Um, I, I put it on the agenda that you can move to adopt it if you have no further changes to make. Then we can just go through the process. So you made some changes and you added some things.
Is this the one, um, maybe we didn't talk about, I was thinking that one of them we were going to ask Chad to look at.
Yeah, this is the one because it's the town police to do that.
I think I'd, I think I, before I vote on, I think I'd like to have Chad take a look at it. Just see what he thinks. Make sure it's something he's going to be able to work with.
Enforce.
Yep. Yep. So why don't we table it till next week after.
And have him look at it.
Yes.
Okay. Sounds good to me. Moving on. Oh, where we at? Census anticipation. I'm just going to talk about this. I could talk a little bit about it, since I was sending the email.
You'll put it on the agenda.
I could have.
You?
Uh, I know I sent some email back and forth about it. Basically, it was to do with matching our census against, I'll call it Google Maps. It's basically, they take a picture and see where all the houses in town. And that, what they requested was to work with the listers was part of their write-up. And make sure it's matching that the houses and the things were together. Well, I sent a message to our lister, and at this time, due to the staffing and stuff, she does not have time to work with these people. So I think it's out of our hands.
Okay.
It's too bad, because I think it would have been helpful. Because it does a whole lot with, when you apply for different grants and stuff, to have your numbers correctly.
But why can't the 911 coordinator do it?
Oh, you want to talk to her and see? Because what they, she.
Because she knows all the addresses.
But it's not just the address.
I know, but you have to, you have to know.
Yeah, she'd have to work with the lister.
Just it seems logical to have the 911 coordinator work on it, in my mind.
I don't have any trouble with that. It's a lot, I just know they didn't say that in the thing. They were looking for listers to, and people to be grant lists and stuff to do that was part of their criteria. So somehow, if they're willing to work together, I think that's appropriate.
But if our lister says she didn't have time to work on it anyway.
Well, maybe, maybe Dorothy can do enough of it that Barb could help her with whatever the other piece.
I don't really know how, it looks like there's a lot involved in it.
There is.
There is a lot. And you don't have to commit to it, rather than get in over our heads.
And that's what I'm afraid of, because.
I don't want to see us get in over our heads either.
I just know.
Without knowing right now whether Dorothy was interested in being able to do it. It was just a thought.
Yeah, well, I just know that Barb and people are like, oh, we could talk Bill into it. He goes to every single door, he could help us out.
I'm lost every time.
I know, Bill, you got enough. Just jabbing you. Basically, but that's what we need. We need somebody.
But if you can't commit, it's, it's better not to.
Yeah, E911 says, this is, this is a building where, where what they're really looking for is not only the building, we're looking for the number of bodies in each building, which is a lot of work.
Yeah, there is.
So, uh, what's your pleasure?
And I'm sure it's something she would want to be compensated for.
Of course.
Well, it's more than.
And we, and we need to know what that, that means, I guess, is where I'd be at there. Because one of the goals is, is we're trying to do something so you can get, apply for certain grants.
Mm-hmm.
You know, but if this thing's going to cost us huge amounts of money for maybe $2,000 in grants, then it's a different story. But let's, I just know I read it, and it's, it's useful data. It's not necessarily data that you need for a grant, because you can find that information elsewhere from the, the US Census that's taken. Because basically, what you're doing is you're, you're comparing the US Census against what you think the town has as an individual for going and looking at each site and knowing what's there. It's a comparison. And then you, then you do a report. So it is time consuming, so. Enough said about it?
Yep.
You want to move on? Okay. Uh, next thing was personnel to do with.
Actually, I have, I have one thing I just realized I had here that I didn't. When you, when you, we have a parking problem out here across the street. Can you, when you, when you fax, when you email this, the large gathering ordinance over to Chad, can you mention to him to look into that parking problem, please?
I believe he's just left them cars here.
And they both.
Well, the sheriff's department provides our.
There's no tracks going to the house, so.
If we could have Chad look into that place.
Are they, are they unregistered cars? If they're being in cars?
I couldn't tell if they're un, I stopped to look tonight, but they are, I believe, New Hampshire cars.
Yeah, both of them have New Hampshire plates on them, but they haven't been moved in a long time.
He's been working, before the snow come, he's working there and needing it sometimes, but.
Oh, the kid is?
The guy was, but it's going to be hard getting them trucks in and out when we get a little more snow.
Well, Joel mentioned it's a, it's a problem for snowplow.
We'll find out. Have, have the sheriff check it out.
They have to be moved because I got sucked off the road the night of the storm. Julie got sucked off into the culvert, told us. And Ellen did the next morning.
Okay.
Okay.
That's all, that's all I have.
Good point.
I'll make a motion, we go into executive.
Fairly all?